All right, good evening, everybody. Today is August, uh, October 8th. It's the monthly meeting of the planning board. If everyone can stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, great, thank you. First item on our agenda is the MBTA communities overlay district. The public notice will be read by Nicole.
Town of Milis offers the planning board public hearing notice. The Town of Milis Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to general law, chapter forty-eight, section five, on Tuesday, October 8th, to 2024 at 7:30 PM in the Veterans Memorial Building, room 229, 900 Main Street, Milis, Mass. at 7:30. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on article, "A Proposed Amendment to the Town of Milis Zoning Bylaws to Add a New Section (Section 23 Multifamily Overlay District), MOD." The proposed bylaw allows multifamily housing as of right in accordance with Section 3A of the zoning act, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-Eight. Amendments to include modification to Section 6, Table 2, area regulations, Table 3, height and bulk regulations, and Section 14, groundwater protection district 4D, Section 5. These use regulations, Table 1, Use Regulations, Section 5E, Site Plans, and Section 13C, Site Plan Review and Approval for Commercial and Industrial Structures and Developments, and Article, Proposed Amendments to the Town of Milis Zoning Map, dated March 9th, 1959, is most recently amended by creating a new overlay district, a new overlay zoning district called Multifamily Overlay District, MOD District, or to take any other action relative thereto. The complete text of the proposed amendment is on file with the Office of the Town Clerk at the Veterans Memorial Building, 900 Main Street, Milis, Mass., and is posted on the planning board's webpage. These articles may not be numbered as they will ultimately appear in the warrant at town meeting. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right, thank you. So this is the MBTA zoning, which was just a vote in the Supreme Court today because the Town of Milton had issues with that and they are now in the Supreme Court is in the process of reviewing the legality of this whole, the whole concept. And they're going to rule on that within 130 days. Unfortunately, we have to make a decision of what we're going to do by town meeting. So one thing I want to say is that we've been through this process for quite a while. I think the committee, which I've said before, has done a great job on tailoring this to the Town of Milis. I think it's going to end up in a location that it should be. I think that the impacts to the town will not be egregious. So we'd be able to meet what the state required us to do and we would be able to do it in a way that would, you know, overly change the face of Milis. Other than there would be a large availability of dwelling units. So that is even what we're talking about, 750 units. So with that, I would leave it to the, to John Cruz and Jody Garzont, if you wanted to, if there was any other highlights that you wanted to hit from that? Or did I scale your? Anything you knew, Jody?
Sure. So I think it's important to note that it's, it would allow for a total of 750 units, more or less, across two major areas. So it wouldn't just be 750 in, in one of these districts. And, you know, we as a committee were charged with creating a bylaw that was compliant with what the state mandated us to do. And I, I think that we have done that and we have also done something that works for Milis. It's not going to be a giant eight-story apartment building right on the sidewalk. It's maximum of three stories, maximum of 40 feet. It includes parking, it includes open space. The parcels that we've identified are underutilized or undeveloped, more or less, at this point. One of the parcels, the GIF site, is inaccessible to the public. It's been an eyesore in the neighborhood for as long as I've been in Milis. So this would allow for a developer to come in and have at least one other option of what they could put on that site. So I, I think what we have created is actually good for Milis. And I'm proud of the work that the committee's been able to do and I appreciate all of the feedback that we've received from the planning board that has allowed us to refine this bylaw to be something that I think works well for us as a town.
And one other thing, this is an overlay district. So it's like Jody has mentioned, it's, it's another option for the developer. They don't necessarily have to use that. Somebody could go into that, into GF and say, hey, we want to build a factory here. And that would be entirely possible. We would have met our requirement to present, to give a...
That's not true.
What?
That's not, I mean, the, well, go ahead.
No.
So I, I believe both parcels of land have not been used for over two years. So they've lost their right. With the oval, with the district that's there, they will have to build some sort of housing development. They, they lost their, their ability to build the...
The grandfather's...
Yeah, the grandfather's gone.
So I thought, I didn't realize the grandfather expired. So that's, that's something I didn't know? Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I'd just like to clarify one thing that you said. This, this article is a zoning article. It is not a development article. Meaning that we would, we are creating zoning that would allow up to the 750, give or take. It's slightly larger. It is not a mandate that these units are going to be built. It is not a directive. This is zoned, this district will be over private property. The current owner or future owners have the ability to decide what they want to do with that property within the zoning laws. They can build, if somebody wants to do this and build less, they are free to do that. If the current or future owners decide they never want to develop it, that could happen as well. There's no mandate from the state or from this bylaw that will require these units to be built. It's, all we have been mandated by the state and all that we've done is create a zoning that could potentially allow for, for these units.
Right, and that's what I was trying to say, although I stepped on my own foot when I said that. But that, that was my point, was that we're just creating right now zoning. So, okay. Go ahead, John.
Something new that I have to share with the group, well, kind of new anyways. While the report is not yet completed, our team has completed the economic feasibility analysis regarding the affordability in the 3A district. And our team has concluded that the 80% AMI for 15% of units is feasible. And that will be our recommendation moving forward. So that's the new information that I want to share. Aside from that, I think you all, both here in this room and everybody at home on TV have heard me speak ad nauseam about this. I don't think we have any new information really to, to share on all of it. So I just want to thank everybody on the board, everybody who's been on the committee and of course, all the members of the public who have come out to lend their thoughts throughout this process, either at this podium or at one of our community engagement events or through direct email contact through either Bob or myself or the MBPC staff. All of you have really helped to make this what it is. So thank you all very much for all of that.
Just one quick question. So on that one, the 80% AMI. So basically, on that, one of the things we brought up is to make sure that some of the units were really affordable and it's not just Jim and a whole bunch of units that the developer makes a ton of money on. So that would be, means that 20% of those would be affordable?
What, the percentage is 15% of units and the affordability threshold is 80% of the area median income. So that's considered affordable. The, the form, I don't think, works for the 60 or 30%, which would be the very and deeply affordable. Typically, 30% is housing authority properties and things like that.
What, one quick, yeah. One quick point. You thought if you'd identify yourself too, please?
Yes, Bob Weiss, Town Planner. One point I wanted to make on the affordability is it only applies to projects that are 10 units or larger. So if you're building a three, a single three family, you don't have to worry about the finance involved in affordable housing.
And that, my point was to bring up that if they do put in larger units, they would be required to make more of them affordable to try to get our affordable housing numbers up so we can get up to 40B, which we actually are able to now do safe harbor, which the Town of Milis is actually, you know, the other, we're applying for the safe harbor, which means that we've developed enough affordable housing that a 40B project now will have to wait. It'll have to wait, so that's... Right, so that's...
Wait two years.
Wait two years, so, yes.
Mr. Chair?
Not forever.
Go ahead.
So the, the statute allows for up to 10% of these homes to be, for the town automatically to indicate that 10% are going to be affordable. Because we've met this threshold of the 80%, we, it looks, we're going to be able to increase that to the 15%.
Okay.
So that is actually a win for the town.
Good, and that's, that's the point I was trying to get apart.
Yeah.
If, you know, something does come in, it will help the town overall because then we would be able to manage the 40B. Where, you know, 40B can come in and they have more leeway to put in projects that wouldn't necessarily, you know, fit what we were looking for because they're going to sidestep the rules. And this will make us closer to our goal.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely correct. I'm, I guess, trying to speak a little bit more in layman's terms. This means any development of 10 units or more will increase the amount of units that Milis has out of subsidized housing inventory.
All right, so are there any more questions before, George?
Yeah, and this is mostly for the public. Any of the existing units that are being built now go towards the 750 or is this over, over and above? Like, we've, we've got some projects now that people are doing and there's some coming online. Are those going to count towards the 750?
Nothing quote counts towards the 750. The 750 is a hypothetical number based on zoning. It doesn't have anything to do with what's built, what has been built or what will be built. It's just a potential capacity of zoning for a section of land. That's all it is.
Okay, now is there a timeframe?
No, there's, there's no timeframe. There's no mandates. There is nothing being imposed on private property owners. What really, what we see this as is a additional set of rules that give property owners more freedom to do more things with their property if they so choose. There's no compelling anything to, to develop the property unless, of course, the, the town wanted to incentivize that in some other way, shape or form. But that's beyond the scope of the zoning.
Okay, so then this probably answers the last one. What if we run out of room? And we don't have 750 units?
So it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
As long as the zoning allows for it.
So what the state did was they provided us with land that we cannot include in this district or land that if we included it, it wouldn't count towards the, the zoning capacity. So as long as whatever we have is not part of that group and that's excluded land, things like, we couldn't just say, well, let's just zone the town hall and the fire station because we know those will never be, be developed, right? So they put that safeguard in there to kind of prevent people from gaming the system. So as long as where we're putting the land is not part of that quote excluded land data set, we're okay. And there's a little bit of it that creeps into some of these parcels along Main Street, but by and large, it's, it's not really a concern. So if there's no room on these parcels, if somebody builds something else there, it might not be industrial, like you said, but if somebody builds something else, if there's other zoning things that come up, that's, that's perfectly okay. There's nothing from a legal perspective that would be a problem there.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the board?
I do, Adam. So first, I, I am also proud of the, the work that this committee has done. I think you've been working on it for two, almost, what, three years now?
It's been about two years, yes.
Two years. And, and I've watched most of your meetings and maybe I haven't come, but I do watch them when they're on Zoom. And I'm, I'm happy this will go to town meeting for a townwide vote because I think everyone in Milis has the right to speak their, you know, their mind on it and, and be able to vote on it. I, I was hoping that we would get some background tonight on what transpired yesterday from counsel or someone, if they would speak on exactly, you know, they must have heard, they must have been talking. I mean, you must have talked about what transpired at the, at the hearing, at the SJC.
I don't have any comments on that.
I just want to make one comment, if I might, not directly. May I?
Yeah, go ahead, just let us...
Yeah, Craig Schultz, member of the planning board. I just want to correct one thing you, you mentioned because it was piled on. I'm sorry. This board, whatever this board is, yeah. I'm not saying select board, I'm saying the, yeah. Anyway, the, this planning board. The, you mentioned that this, we're waiting to see if the state Supreme Court, you know, says that, that, that this is unenforceable.
No, we're not waiting.
Yeah, no, Milton, I know, no, but Milton's not even saying it's unenforceable. Milton's saying that the state cannot compel them to implement this. No one's disputing, and even their attorney in the article that I read, said they're not disputing the fact they can withhold grants and punish them in accordance with what's been done. The dispute is over whether they can be compelled to introduce zoning because the article doesn't, the law doesn't spell that out. They say the punishment is to withhold zoning, withhold funds. So even if they decide, yes, Milton wins, they don't have to comply. The state doesn't have to give them money. And that's been our argument all along, that, that if we don't comply, we lose the funding opportunities. And Milton has other pieces to it, but that was the main point. No one's disputing that the state can punish us if we don't choose to do this. What is being disputed is whether the state can compel us to do this. And if you punish me enough, I'm kind of compelled, so.
All right, thank you.
Well, that was my ending statement, was that I still don't think that the, the state can compel us to, to enforce this on us. I still don't see any benefits that we get in this Town of Milis from the MBTA. I mean, if any one of us need to use the transit system, you got to get in your car, you drive your car to a parking lot, you pay for it and then you pay for the, the, it's not like living in the city, Somerville, Boston, Quincy, where you literally walk down and wait for a bus to pick you up. I have talked to a lot, and a lot of, of our neighbors who are not in favor of this, being forced to, to do that. We'll, we'll, we'll see with the ruling of, of the state, you know, forcing us, you know, not giving us grant money. I, I was going to ask town council, how many, you know, towns have rejected this? And how many is the state? So Milton was the only one that, that has voted this down?
No, there's a big...
It was Hanson.
Yeah, and it was most one.
For the record, Town Council, Elizabeth Lyden. Milton is the only one that is currently out of compliance because the other towns that have rejected it still have a chance to, to fix that. According to the guidelines and the deadlines that were imposed in those guidelines, that was another topic. So I was listening to the oral arguments on the way here, actually. Another issue that they discussed was whether or not those guidelines were actually enforceable because they didn't follow the 38 process, which is the process to promulgate regulations. And so they're, they're not technically regulations, they're guidelines. And so what is the enforceability? And so that was another focus of the arguments. But even if they, the deadlines that were imposed were not enforceable, it doesn't mean that the, the statutory mandate was not enforceable. It just means that there might be still time for towns to comply if they have to go back and, and go through the 38 process to promulgate those regulations.
So what I'm hearing is that then if, if, if per chance a town meeting, this gets voted down, we still have time to look at it, whether we come up with new changes of, of our zoning book from almost head to toe to, to reestablish something like this?
So that hasn't been determined. It was the focus of the arguments, but there was no decision rendered.
And while, while we had, the, from what I heard from Jay Chalamet, who's also a town council, he said that the state could withhold grants and also there was something else where there was, there was other, other funds that could be withheld.
So that was another question of the oral arguments because they were in the guidelines and not in the statute. And so the statute only called for, I think, the three grants that were listed. And so it, it all depends on whether those guidelines are determined to be valid or not and enforceable.
Right, so, so basically, the, the, the three things that were in the, in whatever the first...
That's not changing.
Right, that's not changing. However, you know, they said that, that any discretionary funds could be withheld by the, per view of the governor along with, you know, so, which was the, which was the, you know, the stick. So it wasn't just, hey, you're not going to get a grant for same streets or whatever. Hey, we could hold something else back on you too.
So, so what they said in the follow-up to that, that they could withhold additional funding, that is enforceable because that was promulgated. However, the enumerated grants that they were also stating would be withheld in the guidelines, that is still a question. So they probably, most likely, will come back and say additional funding can be withheld and will be withheld. But the question is, are the ones that were listed in the guidelines actually enforceable?
And those were the ones that are, ones that, like they said, Milton, ones that they hadn't even got used in 12, 10 years. It would be, you know, the grand stoke is sort of have, you know, a whole bunch of them. They do have some with their, they fix streets and things like that, but it's not something that...
So what came out was that Milton actually hadn't used any of the grants and, since 2012. And so for them, there really was no stick. But where the legislature said additional funding could be withheld and will be withheld, it's still to, to be determined what that would be.
Right, and so that's, that's the part, that's the part personally that makes me nervous is, is if, what they're saying is, well, we'll withhold funds for, you know, and who knows what? You know, I would imagine the political feedback, if, you know, it's something egregious, but...
The argument was that in those grant programs, it says, are you in compliance with state statute? And if you are not, you are not eligible. And so even if these enumerated grants are determined to be, you know, not valid as, as written into the guidelines, if you go to apply for these grants and it's a requirement that you follow, that you're in compliance with state law and you're not, then you don't comply.
We wouldn't be able to leave you applying to law.
Correct.
So, so that's the, that's the, that's like I said, the, the thing that you have to keep in consideration, so.
But my, my, my view is, it's just, where does it stop? I mean, you know, I, I, I...
I don't disagree.
I, I, so it's like it's, um, I just don't know if that's, if that's the answer. If, 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 uh, if they're going to tell us that we're not going to give you a grant to, to, which, how many grants would get refused anyways? But we're still waiting for a million dollars to pave one or nine, that they've been telling us for the past five years, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. And, and we haven't seen a penny of it. Yeah, so I, you know, again, I'm very glad that this is going to town meeting. We'll see with the, with the populist, you know, votes on it. But I, I, in this state, I, I'll, I'll make it known, I cannot, you know, be in favor of this.
Mr. Chair?
Rich, can you speak into the microphone? I don't know.
Better? Oh, geez, sorry. Okay, didn't realize it was that far back. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Go ahead. Jody?
So I know there's some talk of, doesn't make sense to pass it now while there's some uncertainty. We as a committee have spent two years working on this. We've come before this board, this is the third time. We have put, we've had community forums and I think what we have in front of us represents the best of what we could do within the statute, which is not, that part of the statute, as I understand it, is not in dispute. There are other parts of the statute that are in dispute, but not that this is law, that, you know, the 38, or 3A, 40, 48 is not law. So my question is, what would we gain by kicking the can down the road again? Since we've already put two years into this, we've created something that I think works for Milis. I don't know where else you would put the zoning that is going to be required of us, that would be as, that would fit with what the residents of Milis have stated what they wanted to see from this. You know, we had the forums, we had the feedback and we followed that. And we've spent two years working on this. Town meeting can decide, they want to reject it, that's always our right as town meeting. But to say, we're just going to push it off? And then what, pick it up again and have to do the same work all over again? I, I think is kind of a waste of time. It's a waste of town resources. So that is my opinion.
So Mr. Chairman, I, I think that that's not what I stated. I, I, I stated specifically that it, I'm glad that, you know, town meeting will finally vote on this, either yes or no. Everyone has an opinion and I think the committee, a lot of the committee members have made this very personal. And no one's taken away the work that they put into it. There's a lot of people sitting at this table that have been sitting up here for, you know, 18 years. So I don't, no, no one's asking anybody, it's just a personal opinion that, that everyone has. And town meeting will, well, let me finish. Town meeting will make the decision. And that's what it's for. So I think that people are going to start making it personal and, and step back and let the people vote. You have the, you have your project and, and it's, and it's going to town meeting. Whether I say yes or no, it's going to go to town meeting. Or whether this board says it, it will still go to town meeting. And that's what I was going to say, it was going to go to town meeting. So, well, depending on, we have to recommend it, correct the vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, so anyhow, yeah, when the close public hearing. And any comments from the public?
Thank you. The issue that I read, oh, Kathy McKinnon, 78 Island Road. And I want to give a shout out to the vice chair. Are you the vice chair, madam, Nicole? Member. You mentioned at the last meeting that you thought the guidelines may be unenforceable. And sure enough, Nicole, at the oral argument, several justices noticed that the guidelines were not promulgated correctly. And if that is the case, then the deadline cannot be enforced because those are in the guidelines. There were many citizens at that oral argument. And I was talking to a woman from Hamilton on the planning board. Now their board is taking it up in the spring. They're bypassing this because they are changing other suggested zoning bylaws to accommodate this better, especially parking issues. And they're not concerned that they're not going to meet the December 31st deadline because they are working on it. And they've let their town council know that we're working on it and it's going to be set for town meeting in the spring. And the way I heard it and the other issue[1719.85] other issue that they brought up was the fiscal impact study. And I find it remarkable that an oral argument on a Monday, the justices mentioned that both a fiscal impact study and a small business sustainability study were not completed to the towns, especially the town of Milton also. But all of a sudden, a day later, they've completed one. Well, you don't have a time to review it or anything. And what is this small business sustainability study? I'd like to see what it was. They're supposed to provide it before the hearing process is completed. So my suggestion, not that what it's worth, is that the planning board determine that this is not a proper time to hear this because the dates may be changed by the SJC to at least wait. Some towns are doing it in the spring and showing an effort that they're going to complete this project. And then also, I'd like to state that I don't know who was on the board here, but maybe you or Nicole and George, the zoning that allowed for Glen Allen took three years. It missed, it failed at town meeting once or twice. And the planning board convened a group of town residents and professionals, sat in a room for a couple of meetings with local builders, and figured out how to make this work and how to please the town. So the fact that you're working two years on this and you've brought a lot of projects, this has only been before, this current project is only before the planning board for a month or two. Some towns have prepared actual renderings to show the people at a forum what this will look like. Maybe it's time to have another community forum. Now the people know what the impact will be financially, do they want this? What's it going to be on the town and on the schools? And I've heard at a meeting that it's going to bring in millions and millions of dollars in tax revenue. But I'd like to remind you that four years ago, Glen Allen brought in millions and millions of dollars in tax revenue, and it's gone. They're looking for more money now. So I strongly encourage you to, let's work on this in the spring. Get some of the people that were on the committee and work with all those zoning bylaws and the parking and get renderings to show people what this is going to look like. Because in my opinion, the GAF property should be a park because of the people that, before everybody here moved here that died, breath breathing problems. There's a reason that there's a mega multi-million dollar lawsuit with GAF and Herman Schuh and everything because of the damage and destruction. So maybe those neighbors, instead of the blight that we're all hearing about, can have a park or something to go into. Let's think about that also for the residents of Milis.
Right. Thank you. Just as a clarification, I think this, I think you guys have been before us for a couple of times, correct?
This is our third time.
Yeah. So, I mean, just for the timeline, it isn't, it hasn't been just a month, it's been.
It was at the last, we voted in favor of this to go to Maytown meeting.
Yeah.
And then the select board pulled it off.
Yeah, just, just as a clarif, I mean, it just, it isn't, you know, it isn't just the last minute. They, we have been here, they have been here more often as it gets closer. But, you know, we've been talking about this for quite a while, so. Okay. Are there any other comments from the audience? Whoa, go ahead.
If I may ask a question to town council, and I'm speaking from the select board.
Yeah.
If this is adjudicated in three months or whatever as something that is not enforceable, can it be repealed by the town if we?
Well, that was the question I was going to ask also.
Sorry.
No, 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 that's fine. No, it's all good. But we can put, my, my comment was, question would be, can we put language in it that if it's found, deemed to be, any portions of it are deemed to be unenforceable, could, you know, could this be removed? Or, you know?
So we kind of touched on this last time. There is a severability clause in the bylaw. And so if anything is deemed to be unenforceable, then yes, it would be stricken based on that clause. But also, a bylaw, a zoning bylaw, as you know, is always subject to revision and change. And so you can always go back through this process again. Even if you pass it now and you decide that something didn't work right, you can go back, you know.
And we can tweak it.
And tweak it and amend it. So that's always a possibility.
All right.
While she's there.
Go ahead.
Is this, the vote at town meeting, is this a simple majority or is it just a?
Simple majority.
Okay. Great. All right. Are there any other questions? Are we good? All right. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. All right. Since we're here, do we want to vote on this now?
We have to.
Well, it wasn't really a question. It was more, all right. Yeah. That was more of, it was more of a rhetorical question. It wasn't, it wasn't a real, all right. So I would make a motion that we, go ahead.
Our motion, our recommendation is whether.
To send it to town meeting.
No.
I make a recommendation to, as a warrant article, that town meeting to be approved.
Right.
So we're recommending our support, nay or yea, not.
Correct.
Because the select board.
Has already done it.
Has already decided to send it to town meeting. We're making a recommendation whether we are.
To endorse it or not.
To endorse it or not.
Which was what I was going to say in a minute.
With the, with the zoning changes.
Correct. Yeah.
What it was, is the last iteration.
Yeah.
As written, I mean, I'll have it in your packets if it hasn't changed.
Yeah.
So as written before.
All right. So ready? We'll try this again. All right. So I make a recommendation that we ask the select board to present this at town meeting as written, with the endorsement of the planning board. All right. Motion's been made and seconded. I'll do this by roll call. So I'm aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Al? George?
Aye.
Jump? Okay. All right. So that's fine. It's all good. All right. So that passed. So it's going to town meeting.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate all your time and your effort in reviewing this and giving us feedback. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okey dokey. Next item is a special permit for site plan approval. Public hearing continued for Dover Road Solar.
Town of Milis Office of the Planning Board notice a public hearing in accordance with provisions of Chapter 48, Section 11, Mass. General Law. Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, where are we, October? Oh, I'm sorry. The planning board, is that better? Will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 8, 2024, at 8:00 PM in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Milis, on the application of Dimitri Tipatis, Dover Road Solar LLC, 401 Edgewater Place Suite 570, Wakefield, Mass. 01880, requesting a special permit for site plan approval under Section 11, excuse me, Section 21, large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation and Section 13(c) of the zoning bylaw of the town of Milis for installation of a 498-kilowatt AC ground-mounted solar array on property located at 140 Dover Road, Milis, Mass., Assessor's Map 53, Parcel 6, property owned by BASF Corporation. Copy of the application and site plan is on file in the office of the town clerk and on the planning board's webpage. This is to be continued without discussion to our next meeting of Tuesday, November 12, 2024, per the applicant's request. Any person interested or wishing to be heard in the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
And just to follow up on this, we did ask the applicant, they've been pushing this off, that if they're not going to proceed with this to pull it off of our, our meeting. So they said that they were going to ask us to, you know, push it off one more time to November, and then we'll, we'll determine if we want to see if we can have them withdraw it until they actually are able to do something with this. So. Oh, sorry. I make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Section, uh, second.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you. All right. Next item of the agenda would be a Form A and our application for Robert and Ellen Santos. Yep. Is the applicant going to do the?
Yeah, or she'll yell at you.
If you guys could identify yourselves so the folks at home know.
Ellen Santos.
Uh, Robert Santos.
So this property, to get the folks at home, this is across from the GAF where the old White House used to be that they took down and moved over to Concord or something. That's been sitting empty for, since what, 1980 something? So they want to split this into two lots. So, go ahead. I cut off your glory.
Well, we did go before the zoning board, and I guess it was approved for being split already. Lot 1R is 27,282 square feet, a two-family dwelling. And Lot 2R is 40,000 square feet, and that's a two-family dwelling. So it's taken that one lot, splitting it, and put two family dwellings on each side. And so we had the plans made up by the engineer and the Mylar, and I guess we need that signed to move forward.
Okay. All right. So, I mean, this was a lot that's been sitting there empty for years, although I was kind of interested in that boat for a while, but it's gone now.
And all the rest of the trash.
That you cleaned up.
Any comment from the board?
I think it's a great idea, and I think that, you know, the property owners, they cleaned it up this summer, this past summer. It was, all the brush was cleared up.
Yeah.
It shows what it, you know, what could be there.
Yep. Okay. All right. So I make a motion to approve the lots 1 and 2R, Union Street. In our application prepared by Turex Engineering for Robert and, I'm sorry, I forgot your, Ellen Santos.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Do, should we sign those?
You could just sign the Mylar, so they can take that. You can sign the copies later.
Okay. Well, sign that so you can, well, you're going to take a quick break and sign that so they can.
Thank you.
Just get out.
Thank you, everybody.
Sorry.
You don't look like him.
You need to grow your hair longer.
Town of Milis Office of the Planning Board notice a public hearing. The Town of Milis Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, on Tuesday, October 8, 2024, at Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Milis, Mass. at 8:15 PM. Purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on proposed amendments to the Town of Milis zoning bylaws as follows. To add a new definition to Section 2 definitions as follows. Private Dog Park, a recreational facility with a minimum of 5,000 square feet of enclosed indoor space for on- and off-lease recreation and training of dogs. The facility may also include fenced-in outdoor recreational spaces. The sale of alcoholic and non-alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises is a permissible accessory use. No private dog park shall include a sit-down, full-service restaurant service. Also to amend Section 5, Table 1, Use Regulations Retail and Service by adding, Section Number 43, Private Dog Park to be allowed, to be allowed only in the IP or IP-2 district under special permit of the planning board, or to take any other action relative thereto. The complete text of the proposed amendment is on file with the office of the town clerk, Veterans Memorial Building, 900 Main Street, Milis, and may be viewed on the planning board's webpage. This, these articles may not be numbered as they will ultimately appear in the warrant at town meeting. Richard Nichols, Chair.
So this basically is, and I'll let the applicant speak to this, but this is basically a small tweak to an existing permitted use and that they discuss what obviously is pretty clear, why they want to deal with. But if you wanted to identify yourself and the folks at home know, in your executive summary of what you're going to do.
Sure. David Lapp, I am proposing to, I am proposing to open an indoor and outdoor dog park, a private monitored park that is, gives the opportunity for safe, safe play for dogs and also social opportunities for dogs and people together in a, in a clean and monitored way that allows for training purposes and doggy daycare and also general clean, dry, warm spaces.
David, can you put the mic closer to you?
Sure.
Apparently the mics are not as loud as normal tonight.
I don't know. Yeah. Where was I? So, clean, dry, and warm spaces for exercising your dogs.
Good evening. I'm Matthew Watzke. Here is counsel. What we've presented is a very narrowly crafted definition of the private dog park that would be an amendment to the list of definitions in the bylaw, and then adding in, as the chair has noted, the additional permitted use of private dog park with it by special permit, by the special permit granting authority.
And the alcohol license would go for the select.
And that, yes, of course. Of course. That's right. And so, and so it's, it's not, not a major change to the zoning bylaw. It doesn't change the maps. It's just inserting an additional permissible use that's very narrowly crafted into the, into the bylaw definitions. One question that was raised when we were front of the Board of Selectmen recently was, what about conditions of the use? And how do we know that, that it won't cause a problem for, for, you know, residents who will end up living in the area? And the answer, of course, is that it's at the discretion of the planning board when it issues, assuming it issues, the, the special permit for the use to impose appropriate conditions so that, so that neighbors' interests are protected. And David is, is well aware of that and would welcome working with the, with the board to have appropriate conditions. Right. Well, we're, we're not leaving them unattended outside so that they could just bark all day long. You know, that's exactly what would not happen.
All right. Good.
Would that be enforceable, enforced by the building commissioner, correct, through us?
Yeah.
It's great to see. I don't think this room has ever been graced with so many attorneys as it has tonight. You know, it must be a zoning night.
Is there any other comment from the board? Because we've seen this a couple. All right. Is there any comment from the public? All right. Would that, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And with this, I make a motion that we approve the changes as noted to the, the new private, uh, sorry, to the zoning.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
And that's to have this as, as an item on the, on the upcoming warrant. Thank you very much.
It will list that, that it's been presented with the, with the recommendation of the planning board for approval.
Understood. We'll be in touch with the town planner just to talk about the procedure for, for going forward and.
Yeah, you'd be best, yeah. Once town meeting is, is, if it's approved or not at town meeting, then that's the queen that you talk to.
Understood. We'll want to talk with, we'll want to talk with her about, about helping make the presentation for it and asking if the town moderator would recognize us to speak before the, before the meeting.
That one would be correct.
Usually don't understand that. All right. Very good, folks. It requires unanimous consent. And there's always one. I'm just going to leave it there.
Well, hearing that, then we'll just make sure that we have a full presentation that the, that the board can have available so that it's presented to the, to the, to the meeting.
Then, then Congress will first have that. So that's, yeah, they usually, they should do a job.
All right. Very good. Thank you. All right, very good, thank you.
All right, good, thanks again. All right. Let's see, next would be, able to place senior development essential request for Mr. Ted Cannon.
How would we manage, we have one.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ted Cannon, on behalf of the applicant. Let's see, the update. Sidewalks, curbing, green strip have been completed, waiting for a date this month for paving. The as-built plan is in progress. So paving and as-built is all that's left.
So with that, there was some items there that I came to us, which I was curious, this, this was. Which was forwarded, I think I would, I need those forwarded to you.
No, that was forwarded to, from the, to me folks, I can give.
There was a couple of outstanding questions that the homeowners had, and you, if you don't. But you want to read those into the, into the. I can read anyhow, if you guys don't want to, I can. So they presented, the homeowners presented a list of items that had not been presented as of yet. Phase one, installation of two parking space beside unit twenty-eight. Phase one, install top coats for driveways for unit twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. Phase two, overflow parking requires binder asphalt, the top asphalt layer, currently gravel parking spot, which I would imagine they get that during the paving. Phases two, maybe where we can stop asphalt layer, which we all know, we, that's part of the paving. And phase two, unit thirty-three and thirty-four are the only units that driveway water does not drain out to the road as drains, as it drains into the garage, or towards the garage. The developer installed the drain, but it's installed too high, with the rain, water runs, it runs into the garages. And so they noted that as an issue now. Part of this isn't necessarily, the driveways wouldn't necessarily be in the planning board's purview. We're bringing this forward as notes from the homeowners association. So maybe if, when the paving contractor was there and Mr. Fox wanted to deal with that, that would be an opportunity for him to kill two birds with one stone. But we have no enforcement authority over that, so.
Yeah, I will note that one through four are all the paving items. And certainly I'll make him aware of item five, and if, when the paving guys are there, if they could rectify that without too much trouble, I'm sure that he'll take care of that.
Can I just ask, is that the basin that I met yous all at the other day, that's in the middle of the berm? The basin thirty-three and thirty-four that was on this list? I was told that that was for, and I was gonna see it in the as-built.
There was a, there was a, the DPD director was up, and it was a.
Yeah.
A interesting catch basin that was.
Good evening, Rich Campbell, Acorn Place eleven. So which one are you talking about?
The basin.
I don't have any funding.
Okay, yeah.
That's it. And that was installed to alleviate the flooding point towards the driveway?
Right, that's in phase two.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so yeah, we've seen, the folks at home have seen it, but there was the DPD director at the last meeting who brought a picture of a catch basin that seems to be a bit elevated. We actually thought it was an overflow possibly, but I think that was the catch basin that they had possibly intended to catch the water in the garage. But it seems to be above the level of the pavement, which would make that difficult.
We'll talk to Dan about that.
That's not it, the basin's in the driveway.
So that basin may be tied into the one that's in the driveway. And those two connecting and go out to the basin out back.
So it's further up, okay.
Yeah.
And one of my drives by, somebody can show, show it to me.
Sure, sure.
All right, so we, we may know that these, like I said, this is technically, that's out of our purview, but the applicant didn't.
Bob will fix it. He'll fix it.
Yeah. We, we wanna add too, that we've been working with Bob too, independently, along with you guys, and he's been very cooperative. And he's come forward to do everything so far that he says he's going to do. And we're hoping that this last stage, he'll do that in October, a- as he stated earlier.
And as much as we'd love to see you guys come to our meeting, it's really special. We, we are hoping that we will be able to get this wrapped up too, because Ted actually wants to stay home also. So it would be great to get this thing wrapped up, so. All right, great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I make a motion that we, we, increase extension to our next meeting. November twelve. Motions been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is. I'm ahead of schedule. All right, so I made a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of our last meeting as.
There were two sets.
All right, yeah, with two sets of meetings, we had two things, so.
September tenth and the twenty-fourth.
So I make a motion that we approve the minutes from September tenth, that's noted.
Second.
Motions were made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from September twenty-fourth, that's noted.
Second.
Motions been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good. Will it be in the meeting?
So the seventh or fourteenth?
All right, October, oh, January.
So we have December twelve, and then.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have one of the journals.
How about January fourteen?
How does January fourteen work for everybody?
That's what works. We'll try to get Mr. G. M. Petro here.
And just for folks at home, we can't start our public meeting until other, let's see.
Did you sign all the, obviously you did not?
No, the paper ones.
I didn't.
I did. You didn't sign the paper ones?
No, we didn't, we didn't. We'll, we'll send the papers one.
Did take this one. I did mine. I'll check on the brooms.
For someone who's looking at the end here, the time doesn't really matter, you kind of like, all right, you know? So, true. That's all right, I'm on the clock, so.
We have, you know, stop.
What time does it start, Nicole?
Eight thirty-five.
Oh, eight thirty-five, I thought it was eight thirty.
I thought, I, I thought the selectmen were always on the clock.
Yes, that's what the selectman does for.
That's my point.
All right, we're back on. All right, so back at it. The next item on the agenda is proposed zoning bylaw amendments, CB two zoning district public hearing.
Town of Millis Officer of the Planning Board, notice of public hearing. The Town of Millis Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to General Law Chapter forty-eight, Section five, on Tuesday, October eighth, two thousand twenty-four, at Veterans Memorial Building, room two twenty-nine, nine hundred Main Street, Millis, Mass. at eight thirty-five P. M. The purpose of the public hearing is to propose, provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on proposed amendments to the Millis zoning bylaws. The proposed amendments include, see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws as set forth below. To amend zoning bylaw, Section five, use regulations, D, table of use regulations, Table one, use regulations, by changing certain principal uses under retail, service, wholesale, transportation, and industrial accessory uses from no, not permitted, to SPB, Special Perm, Special Permitting Board in the CB two zoning district, Commercial Village two. Number two, to amend zoning bylaw, Section five, use regulations, Section D, table of use regulations, Table one, use regulations. Principal uses, retail and service, number thirty-eight, artisan manufacturing, by replacing it with number thirty-eight artisanal and craft maker space or gallery, including the display and retail sales of the arts and crafts created, produced, or manufactured. And three, to amend zoning bylaw, Section five, use regulations, by adding subsection H. In the CB two zoning district, retail establishments may, subject to conditions as the planning board may impose, conduct outdoor sales periodically pursuant to a plan submitted to and proved by the planning board showing the area in which the sale is to take place, the proposed dates and hours of operation, and any other pertinent facts and/or conditions, or to take any other action relative thereto. The complete text of the proposed amendments is on file at the Office of the Town Clerk, Veterans Memorial Building, nine hundred Main Street, Millis, and may be viewed on the Planning Board's webpage. These articles may not be numbered, as they will ultimately appear in the warrant at town meeting. Richard Nichols, Chair.
So, the Planning Board actually had sent forwards a larger list of items to the select board per the owner, the owner's suggestion, request. These were voted, then voted on by the select board, where they pared down the number of items that they wanted us to vote at. However, there was discussion, and we did check with town council, but there was nothing stopping us from bringing these back up again, if we wanted to talk about. So I need that to the board, was there, and have a right to discuss the articles that were presented earlier?
Yes.
Before we do that, Mr. Cannon, since this would be, you were at the meeting also.
Sure.
The, the, would that be something that you were interested in also, or do you feel on where you, you know?
We had a, a very good discussion with the select board, and they raised some concerns about some of the, like, light industrial uses that the town, at least in the select board's point of view, would like to get away from for that area. I would, because the opportunity here with the artisanal and craft space is really a unique opportunity and fleeting, I would recommend to my client that we just proceed with what the select board recommends, so that it goes to town meeting with a recommendation from this board in with the select board. Because this board could revisit those, but the select board would speak out against those at town meeting. My fear would be that they throw the baby out with the bathwater and lose sight of the fact that this is a real good opportunity for the town, which the select board also recognized. So although grateful, the select board did recognize that this was a stepping off point to reexamine the zoning in the CB two district. They expect the preference to take a closer look at housing. You know, my, obviously my client was disappointed, was very happy with the progress we made with this board, but understood where the select board was coming from. So at the risk of potentially, and I'm sure you've all been to town meeting and see how this happens, right? You take one left turn and you don't know where you're gonna end up. So I, I think if we could get that added to town meeting, so that this board is approve, approving, a- as suggested by the select board, so that the select board can support it, and so this board could support it. I think that would, would be good for, my client, and good for the town, and my client is prepared to continue this discussion and perhaps come back in May with some more changes.
All right, was there, on the board?
Yeah. Okay, well, since the, the petitioner's backed off a little bit, my argument might not carry as much weight, but I have concern over the way this has been approached. It came before the planning board, we whittled down some of the requested changes and omitted those. According to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, on zoning changes, changes can be brought to the select board by the planning board, by a petition of citizens, by a property owner, and the state, the way the section is stated, the select board must present to the planning board that the, the zoning changes, within fourteen days, there's absolutely nothing in there which states the select board can change what was submitted to them. Okay, I, I don't feel it's part of their purview. You know, politics is not my strong point, I'm not a politician. I'm just saying what I feel, what I've read, what I see in the state law. So I, I'm not thrilled the way, the way that was handled. I would prefer to have all the changes we submitted go on the warrant and have the people vote, but I do defer to the petitioner, if you, if, you know. Since we have select board members here, would you, if we put forth our original proposition, would you speak out at town meeting that you did not want our changes to go through? would you speak out at town meeting that you did not want our changes to go through?
No, no, nope. Hi, Ellen Rosenfeld, Select Board, twelve Evergreen Terrace. The reason that the select board acted the way they did was because there's a history with this parcel, and I'm not sure that this board knows the history. So, the history is this. That parcel was rezoned back in twenty fourteen to a C. V. two district. It's the only parcel in Millis that has that designation. And it was done on purpose, and it was done by Aspen Wall, because he wanted to get away from the manufacturing and storage and whatever was going on there for the last however many years since Cleco closed, because it's downtown Millis, and he really saw a different future for it. So, when that was added, the existing uses, of course, are grandfathered, and they have been keeping them going, which is how they've been continuing their businesses over the years. Now, in the meantime, so the CB two took away, it changed the Enn and Hope parcel, the Herman Chu parcel, Bay State Realty, and it took away the warehousing. So, but it still allowed multifamily dwellings, restaurants, shopping, retail. But it couldn't be in the same building. You had to have, like, a multifamily, and then a thing, and a boop-a-doo-boop. Now, we also have this new M. C. E. O. D. nomenclature that is not on that parcel. Now, I think that you've discussed it for that parcel, but you never did it. So, I think that rather than, this is, rather than this piecemeal, they came up with six or eight different zoning changes. If we have a construction, we can have this. If we have warehousing, we can have outside this, changing all these. I think that you, that this board, I mean, if you, if you want to, but it just would make sense to, instead of that piecemeal, to extend this M. C. E. O. D. to that parcel, to all of those parcels, because it gives you, we already have that in some pieces of town. I think that would be a perfect spot for that, and you would have, you could have a single, you could have, like, what's down at Napper Tandy's, right? Mixed use, housing, some office, retail, in the same building, and, listen, what we really need in Millis is, we need housing downtown to support the commercial base that we have. We have a teeny tiny commercial base. As we know, people are not going to the malls anymore. You go to the Navy Mall, dead. People are sitting at home, they're shopping at Amazon. If you want to get any money, and I'm not just talking for my plaza, I'm doing okay, but for the pieces of, we're always talking about, bring the commercial, bring the commercial base, we have eight percent commercial base. I mean, teeny tiny. But if you want to support it and have it help offset some of the taxes to the homeowners, which is what everybody wants, you need housing downtown, walkable housing. And that would be a perfect spot for extending the M. C. E. O. D., which would give them, you know, they still can be grandfathered with their, with their, you know, the warehousing, whatever else they have going on, but it would give them a real opportunity to bring everything in that we need and that they could potentially have. So, that was my take from it. Not this, you know, you can, you can think of it as, okay, maybe they get a Home Depot, and then there's some construction outside, that'd be great, and we could zone for that if that tenant ever came. But to allow light manufacturing and construction and materials yards, you're going to have downtown Millis be what's in the industrial park, down where, you know, Comcan is, because that's where, what that is. And if you love driving down there and looking to the left and looking to the right and seeing that, at the Colt Building now is a lumberyard. Across the street, where the old septic tank business is, this, I don't know what that is, but there's huge logs there, lumberyards, that's where it belongs. Downtown Millis, it doesn't, it didn't thrill my board to think of tractor-trailer trucks coming in, dumping off one thing, and another one coming in and picking it back up. That was, that was the reason, to perhaps give this board an opportunity to look at that whole piece with a more comprehensive plan. That's all.
Nope, that's fine. And so, one follow-up, just give any, so, I mean, that would have, anything, anything that would have happened there would have been through special permit. So, I think, you know, one of the things that they, you know, had brought up was, I said, you know, not Home Depot. So, I mean, the planning board would have had oversight over that. I think the, your point, though, is well taken, that I think this is a plan, since the applicant was generous enough to back off, I think we should talk about this area. I mean, the thing is, you know, Charlie Aspenwall's been gone for ten years. His vision for the Town of Millis, it doesn't, I mean, he's gone. We have to have a new vision for the Town of Millis. So, whether it's, whether it's mixed use, whether it's, you know, let's say, let's say, you know.
I will say, I will say this, I forgot to say this, and this is true. In Aspen Wall's day, they did not want housing downtown. It was a, that was a, that was the reason for, for the CB two. They did not want housing. It was a very different time, right? No more housing, no more kids in school, right? Let's just shut our borders up. But times have changed, it's a different era, as you see with the, what we're trying to do with the, with the bylaw you're trying to pass. It's all about housing and the, and the lack thereof.
So, yeah, so finishing up on that, is that? One second. You know, I, I would say, you know, I think we need to look at that, and like, since the applicant is willing to work with us on that, I'd be okay with, you know, personally, with presenting what they have, what was approved by the select board and on the acknowledgement that we'll circle back to the downtown. If, let's say, EMC or, let's say, Telkin, and it said, hey, we want to put up a nice square box plant, we're going to have five hundred people working in there, and you never even know they're there, that wouldn't bother me either. But, you know, it's, it's all about bringing tax revenue into the, into the town. So, anyway, that's my thought, go ahead.
Okay. I would love to see that building gone. It's ugly, it's antiquated, it's out of date, it's out of place, but it's not going anywhere. It's private property. We're not going to squeeze them out by making it so they can't rent it out. It's in the town's best interest if it is fully rented. Employees use town services, they shop in your shopping center. Bringing more housing right downtown, well, we're going to have this MBTA zoning where we could potentially have up to seven hundred fifty units. That's probably going to pass. How private housing isn't necessarily a tax advantage. You start bringing more kids in, you're going to run out of school space. It's going to end up costing more than we bring in for revenues. So, that argument, you know, take it for what it's worth. Again, the bigger issue for me is that we presented something and you changed it, and that does not seem to be allowed by state statute. I'm not happy about it. You know, I understand your role in the town, and you want to push the town in a certain direction, but I feel you're way out of place here. The people should vote. You know, we're going to decide now if we're going to include these things or not. It sounds like maybe we won't, but I would like to know if we do proceed with all the items. Are you going to speak against us at town meeting?
Well, since I didn't want to send it here, yes, I will speak against at the town meeting.
Anyone else?
Sure. I'm sure Ellen was waiting. So, I agree with Ellen, a hundred percent what he stated. I mean, there's two, there's two distinct roles that the select board have and what a planning board has. That's why we're all elected. That's why every one of us put our name out there in the ballot, and we get elected. I have never seen this. Nicole, have you ever seen this? Judge, have you ever seen this? And Ellen, Richard, have you ever seen this? I've never seen this come back from, that was something that was presented within our legal rights, as Ellen stated, for this to be done. And again, I appreciate the, he came in in good faith. Top council came in, the property owner came in in good faith and negotiated with us what we thought was in the best interest of Millis. And it seems like all that's cared about is what the select board care about in the Town of Millis. And that's when the town doesn't work. The town doesn't work that way. Everyone has their role, we're all elected to do a job. And, and I do, I agree with Ellen, shame on them for doing this. We could have, they could have come to us, there was a public hearing, just like we're talking about the, you know, the two people that sat there before. There was plenty of time to come and speak about this. They knew that they were coming that night for the, a discussion on it, and they didn't come. Now, they're coming after they changed it. So, you know, I, again, I agree with you, if, if, if that's what, we're here to do what the property owner wants, and we need to move forward so he can get what he can, he can get somebody else in there to get his business, his building filled, and we get people, stop paying taxes.
Well, I'm trying to, you know, spin it to the positive. What I would say is that, you know, this is a discussion that is being brought up. I mean, by sending it back and changing it.
Yep.
I mean, it's, it's bringing up discussion. You know, our product ends up getting better the more we talk about it, to some degree.
Correct. If you remember back years ago, when we used to have, we used to have a department head meeting and a tri-board meeting. We used to have it every month, and all of this would have been brought up during that, that discussion. There was a member from the planning board, there was a member from the Conservation Commission, there was a select board member, there was the town administrator, and police chief, fire chief, DPW worker. We met once a month, and all this stuff was brought up. And maybe it's time to look into institute that. So, maybe the, the select board, if they didn't know about it, it would have been brought to their attention, that, hey, you know, who came in front of the planning board that week? And, and it could have been brought to their attention.
Mr. Chair.
Jim, I didn't know about it till Monday. I didn't know about it till Monday morning of the meeting.
No, and to be fair.
I'm sorry, I, I don't know everything that's on your plate.
To be fair, the, and the applicant, you know, they did come in, and it was, you know, when we, when they called and said, hey, can we come before your, we said, well, it's just about the last minute, so, you know, they're.
And it was sent the next day.
Yeah.
It was sent, the letter was sent back to the select, to the town administrator's office, that they, they came in front of us and we were requesting it. So, whatever day we had our meeting, Camille sent it the very next day.
But the timeline, what I would say is, the timeline was short. I mean, all in all, the applicant's okay with it. We all decided that we do need to make some discussions. I think the, the comment of, you know, you know, if there are discussions of changes to be made, you know, obviously, with more time, maybe it would be more advantageous for us to have, you know, a conversation back and forth. But this was a quick timeline, so I'm not, I don't take it as, you know, anyone doing it purposely. I think they were just trying to get, trying to get it done, and that's my take on it, so.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Well, I agree with you, Jim. In my time, I've never seen the select board change it. However, when we make, when it's initially presented to us, we make a recommendation to send it to the select board, or we send it to the select board with a recommendation that they send it back to us for a public hearing. So, theoretically, so, not theoretically, I mean, they could have just said, no, we don't like this. Instead of changing it, they could have said, we're not sending it back to you for a public hearing.
But the law states that they must send it back within fourteen days. They shall send it back. It doesn't say they have the option to not send it back or to change it. It says they shall send to the planning board within fourteen days.
Okay.
It's right here.
No, I'm, I'm.
That's not my understanding.
Well, I think on this one, I'd like to concentrate, as much as, I think we've talked about that enough, and to discount your, your comment, I think, you know, what's on the table right now is, I'm going to recommend the, the.
We'll get a full closed public hearing.
Well, that, oh, that's, yeah, but, yeah.
Before you make a motion.
Before I make a motion, yeah. So, I make a motion for closed public hearing.
Second.
All right, motions remain in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, I make a motion that we present the, recommend, sorry, the warrant article for the town meeting as modified by the, or as presented by the select board.
Second.
All right, motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Sorry.
Me.
Oh, you didn't say no, so.
I said aye.
You said aye, but you need to ask all those.
Oh, you want to, okay, all votes, sorry. Okay.
Yeah, I will go along with it only because of Mr. Cannon's comments.
Okay. All right, so that's fine. All right, so.
Thank you.
While the select board is still here, we won't hold you.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Good luck to this town meeting.
Well, I think they were.
It's going to take six weeks to get through it.
I would like to request the select board and the planning board sit down.
But I want to talk to you in two seconds.
All right. This is not the only issue on this zone. I think it is, it would be important, I actually discussed with two of the members that they should be setting forth a committee, because it's not, the planning board doesn't have time to do it of ourselves to review some of the discrepancies in here. But there are, there are discrepancies in this CB two that, with regards to extending the M. C. E. O. D., because I know we had initially discussed it, and I started looking into it. Those discrepancies need to be addressed, and I don't think it should be something that is just by the planning board.
Sorry.
I think it should be, I mean, my personal opinion, is it something that should be addressed between the planning board, the select board, and maybe some of the other departments? Because there are a lot of discrepancies now that would, not discrepancies, but things that are in here that would cause discrepancies of the M. C. E. O. D., because, as I said, I was initially always in favor of extending the M. C. E. O. D.
Jim, you thought it was already there.
I thought it was at the.
He thought it was there.
I thought it was at the.
Well, it was there, but it was repealed.
Yeah.
And I don't know, and it was repealed when this CB two was put in place.
Yeah, it's a CB two. Listen, we'll have a discussion. Listen, listen.
No, you have to go on this.
I'm on the mic here. Listen.
There's still light.
I'm not, I, I'm not, I'm not here to take your authority. Listen, I got enough on my plate. I was here just to present that I think would be a more comprehensive way to look at this than to pick through eight different bylaws with eight, and accept their chart and their graph. If I were you, I'd want to study that for months. You know, they came in at the, at the last minute, they, they.
That being said, it would all be in the special permit, so they could.
I understand, but.
They could have said they wanted to do a dirt bike, you know.
I do, I understand, but it's still choppy.
No, and, and I.
He's not going to tear it down and build a multi.
No, I understand that. All I'm saying is, I don't think that this, I don't think that we, as a town, or you as a board, should have an applicant come in and go through your zoning and, and, and have you take their? No, you have to look at that, take a breath, and incorporate it into what we as a town are looking for.
Which is fine, and once again, that's your opinion, which is fine.
Yes, yes.
What, what my take on it was, they came to us with a list of, hey, we'd like to do these things because this would make our property more usable, and, and, you know, so they would be able to generate, and it's been underutilized for years. We still have the authority by special permit to reject all that. So, I think we're saying.
I get it, I do.
We're just saying that, however, I do agree with you that, I think, and Camille and I have talked about it, and Nicole, and, I mean, our zoning, we just keep on laying crap over crap.
I agree.
And I think we should go.
We didn't include it, we didn't include everything he asked for. He wanted, he wanted manufacturing, he said.
I know that, I know that. I, I know that, I, I, I do know that. But all I'm, all I'm saying is, listen, if you want to go back through their six things, and you agree that that's what we want for that piece of property down.
But, and what's, we never agreed. What we said is that they could apply for that. So, they could apply for anything they want. We didn't want to limit them, is what we said. I mean, I actually read, when I had to present to the FinCon. I mean, I actually read, when I had to present to the FINCOM, and one of the FINCOM members, we had, we had actually not extended the, one of the uses that could possibly happen for the dog park. And he said, well, why didn't you do that? And, you know, he brought up a good point. I mean, we probably should maybe rethink that, you know, and, and that's okay. I mean, so, I, I, what I would say is, I, I look at this as, we've identified something we should look at. I think as a group, we should, we're not picking away at it. We're not going to be able to really get all this.
The other, the other piece that, that I recognized was that this, all of those pieces was, was exactly, all of those, other than the two that we approved, was exactly what Charlie got rid of.
But that's not relevant to any.
I understand that, but, but what I'm saying is, that was, but, but, you know, this was his whole life, Millis, and, and the boards he served. So he put that into place 10 years ago, and now they come back to undo all of that. And I just didn't know if, if that's.
You know, and I understand that, however, you know, that 10 years ago, that somebody went in and that place is basically sat, just about empty.
Yeah.
It's been empty for 10 years. So, I mean, what we may say is, hey, we tried it for 10 years, didn't quite work out.
Well, it's not empty. He was full for a lot.
No, but it's also, if you look through.
He's keeping it going.
If you look through the bylaw, a lot of what was put in place for that was, we were just bringing in, we were ju, at the same time, we were drafting the assisted living bylaw. And our two engineers ago, Barbara Zell and I spent five months drafting the assisted living bylaw, and the MAPC came in and gave us a three, a three sentence assisted living bylaw, and we said, no, this was, we were, and so that was all incorporated into there because there was this question of, well, let's, we need assisted living.
What, that's zoned for that, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, which is not zoned across the street. So there, but when that all went into play, because I was on that committee, Charlie got a grant from MAPC.
I know, I know.
And they came, and they did, and they did this whole thing, and they opened it up, and for the net, and.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't participate at all.
At all, Ananhope.
They wouldn't come to the meeting.
But the thing was, is that the way all of that was written, it was, well, let's redo this zoning and let's get in, you know, either a, it was a pub, or, I mean, a brewery or a sports complex. And the way it was done, everybody voted for it because they, it was presented in a way, it was never said, but it was presented in a way that that's what was coming for the next two years.
We all believed.
I had so many people coming to me saying.
Where's the sports?
Where's the sports complex? When's the sports complex coming? And through the entire process, I kept saying, this is private property. There's no way. And so it, while you're right in the way that it was changed to try to incorporate what the town wanted at the time, is you know better than, than anybody, private property's private property, and nobody can tell you what to do with it.
I learned today.
And he stood at that meeting.
Who's he?
Mr. Chase.
Yeah.
And stood up at town meeting and said, I don't want this put here because I have industrial use and I want to keep my industrial use.
I remember that.
And I believe you stood up, Ellen, and all fan, and you supported him. And you said, his, he should not, the town should not be changing the, the zoning of his property without having, now, you know, his, now granted, he never showed up to any of it.
No, I know, but, but the, that was Erwin Chase, who since passed away.
Yeah, I don't know which one of them.
And you're right, you're right. He was against it, he didn't participate at all in any discussions, and, but he did show up at town meeting, I remember. Now, he's passed away. He has a brother, and then there's a son, the two of them. So the son was the one that came to our meeting. And he's interested in becoming, he's interested in participating, which I think he should, we should, we should invite him. He's very interested in participating. So I think whatever discussions we have, we should invite him.
Bring him to your Capitol Planning Committee.
He intended dying to come, and maybe we can get something on for the Springtown meeting for him.
Yeah.
I just thought, I'm, I'm telling you, when I didn't see it until Monday on the agenda.
I didn't, not.
It was very quick.
Totally believe it, but that was not your fault.
No.
That's not your fault that you didn't see that. I think there's other ways that a lot of the communication needs to be.
Right.
And that type of meetings that we used to have once a month, it needs to be back in place. I mean, we're running around now to talk about Toad Brothers closing out and stuff like that, and we're all sending stupid emails.
Who, who, who were those meetings between?
Aspenwall. He had, he, the Department.
Once a month?
Once a month, once a month, and we went over every single project. We're, you know, and I think Bob's trying to do it with his monthly update, and, but it's not.
All right, well, let's do it. It's not hard.
Yeah.
I've got plenty of time.
Alan's retired, he can be the planning board.
Listen, I don't mind doing it. Communication is key.
Absolutely.
I agree with you. I, I can't come to your meetings, I can't read your agendas, but I can come to a once a month, so we're all on the same page.
We'll talk to Mike about it tomorrow.
Good, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, I think that's it, unless there's anything else from the board.
Ellen.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's remain in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everybody.